Okay. Um continuation of City of Flemish Planning Commission. Deliberations now on Mill Pond Crossing. I would like to remind everybody at this stage that now is the time when we can discuss things and and make suggestions and motions to add conditions of approval and all those sorts of things, but I'd I'd like to make a statement and anybody can contradict or correct me. But that this is a quasi judicial hearing and that we're supposed to make a decision based on the rules that are in writing and the application that's been made. And a lot of the conversation that's been had is really not pertinent or relevant to that process. I think personally, I think it was good to include that conversation because it's definitely a point of uh much public interest and how people feel about the development and the decisions that are being made. But things that um are secondary are although they inform our approach to which questions we should be asking and and which portions of all the pertinent regulations might apply in the end once now that we have that information, if it's not relevant to the criteria by which we make the decision, we need to just put that aside. And I I think that point was made a few times, so I I would both for the brevity of the remainder of the meeting and for just reaching a a just conclusion, that's kind of our mandate at this point. And I guess, does anybody have any additions or contradictions to that prior to proceeding? Okay, thank you.
From yes.
Commissioner. Oh, you're muted Peggy.
So that the original, what we're discussing, the original approval was very specific about what was allowed. We could debate on whether it would have been approved or not back in twenty eighteen or not. Um but it was very specific about what was going to be there and included absolutely no duplexes, no triflexes, no zero lot line homes, no townhomes and no apartments. Um, we are currently under review reviewing our our housing analysis and our strategies that we're going to be doing. We're supposed to be talking about that tonight instead of this. Um, and we are going to be as a body discussing where we want the high densities. Do we want them closer to town? Do we want them down on Chapel Street? And so to me, it just it feels like this is almost a premature conversation. Because we are in the midst of making some pretty big decisions for Fulham that we've been taxed with. I was just kind of curious to see how other people thought about that. I know that we can't say this isn't what I just said isn't written down in the code book. So is it still open for discussion? Is it still valid?
Well, it's it's valid as it relates to the codes and regulations. If if we don't have a justification against something that's in writing at this point, then and it's not supposed to be part of the process. Chris.
Yeah, I'll just tell you the analogy that often gets used and quoted is moving the goalposts, right? The the goalposts are set at the time the application is submitted. And although we may be reviewing policy changes and shifting those policies and adopting new code language, it's going to require different things. The fact is the applicant submitted the application when they submitted it. We don't control that timetable that the private property owner does. And the requirements from the city standpoint is to review the application based on the criteria that's in place at the time the application submitted. So we can always learn from these experiences if there's things about the criteria that you don't care for, then we need to take a note of those and and make revisions in the future. But we do need to hold ourselves accountable to the current criteria that's in place um right now and not necessarily what we would like to see in the future, which is a good conversation to have, but it's really a conversation to have when we are talking about housing needs analysis, housing policies, not necessarily on an actual applications in front of us right now.
Uh, I I would say that said, there's enough ambiguity in some of those regulations that are clear in their intent that maybe there's some specific things that we would be putting in some of our future code that we could add as a condition of approval here, provided that it meets you know, some of that ambiguous language that is more of a judgment call. And and that's really where the role of the planning commission comes down is to look at those zoning regulations and the applications that come in and try to make a decision as to what's in, what's out. So. So I think with that, we can, we can start some deliberations. Anybody have any thoughts? I certainly do. Jana.
Yeah, I obviously, this this whole subdivision has been beset with all kinds of problems right from the get go, but I if the whole concept behind it was was to supply to up our inventory of affordable housing. I do feel like that's something which we all recognize is a great need in our town. And this alteration to the previous plan seems to me a clear attempt to do that. Um, and I think there's a lot to like here, you know. I mean, this this thing is going to have the buried utilities. We like that. I like the park. I like the townhomes. I like the the density. I think it's appropriate. I think I think that's a good move. I am concerned about this forty foot driveway. This section of forty. Now, I can't say that.
No, no, you can. I was, I just was gonna ask if I could answer your question from earlier about what that's like.
Oh, please, please answer that question.
So I'm I'm quite familiar with that layout. A couple of my kids have lived in um very similar townhouses in the Seattle area where they're quite um common and usually three story and and actually really nice. Um, I think the closest example that I'm aware of here is there's some fairly new townhouses in Carvallos close to campus on Eleventh between Jefferson and Adams. They don't quite have the exact same layout, but they've got the center. It's it's more of a parking lot with garages kind of off the parking lot and it's all pavement between the townhouses. And then on the street side, you have, you know, a fairly short setback. But it actually, from an urban design standpoint, I think it makes a very attractive development. There's kind of almost like a front stoop sort of feel like in a New York downtown sort of an area, but there's a nice series of street trees and um a nice sidewalk where your sidewalk is not interrupted by driveways. So I think it's actually a pretty nice development, um something that I'm really in favor of. Uh, I think from a design standpoint, you could give a little more character to the site by having, you know, some maybe less linear roadways and more um some gaps so that you have larger green spaces between townhouses. And that's something that I look forward to talking about for our, you know, after we're done with the comprehensive plan, big picture stuff, getting into the nitty gritty of what gives in the code. Um, is something that I I I think is going to be good for Fulham, give you the density that we want to have, give us a more walkable uh neighborhood. Um, but like we said a minute ago, those are future requirements that maybe we can put in that are not there today. But that, if you're familiar with the with all the residence halls on campus, those new townhouses are just one block east.
Okay. Well, thanks. That that helps. Initially, when I was reading this, I the whole notion of having the parking behind rather than in the in the front was very appealing. I thought, oh, that's great. I've seen that in neighborhoods in in Portland. And like you say, it's nice to have a street that is not broken up with driveways and having the traffic coming in, going from the front of the houses. But then I started getting nervous trying to picture what is essentially a parking lot behind. But you say it's okay.
Chris has something that I think real quick.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the forty foot length would still be a requirement for all of the single family homes in this in this um development on the on the townhomes where they're taking rear access, that'll be twenty feet in length. That won't be the forty feet. So you'll have the private driveway and you'll have twenty feet, which is standard come off the back. Um, because you've still got the three parking spaces there. It'll just be the single family homes that are going to be larger homes, more vehicles, etc. So it won't be quite as parking lot as what maybe you're envisioning, but it's still, it there's still gonna be a substantial amount of asphalt concrete back there. But you're not seeing it from the street, right? It's the back access to the properties. Um, so yeah, there's there's pros and cons to it, but I want to make sure I clarified that point because I I thought I heard you say forty foot in the rear and that's not, that's not quite accurate.
Okay, good. That helps too. Thank you.
Did you have something else, John, or should we move on to Van?
No, that's really it.
Okay, Commissioner Hunsaker.
What I started to ask earlier on page, uh, it's about on the staff report, which are things that maybe I think should be conditions of approval. Um, on page three, at the very bottom, it says E conditions of approval. And it does, it is to do with one certain thing. Well, I guess there's a two or three different things. But I guess, Chris, would that, should that be a condition of approval? You're you're we can't hear you, Chris.
Yeah, I intentionally muted my microphone and then I didn't. Yeah, so we're talking about letter E on the bottom of page three. And specifically states conditions of approval and then it doesn't show up on the back list of conditions of approval.
Right, yeah, I didn't find it.
You know, when it does it have? Yeah, I think it's just specific to that. So, yeah, I think we could just add that to a condition will number it in with the others, but I don't see. I mean, there's number eleven is kind of close. Access easements for benefit of affected properties, fire safety, private lines and pathways. So we kind of touch on it, but again, it's not going to hurt to carry that over. That's obviously the intent. And this sounds like language of the city engineer probably put in there, so my recommendation would be to include it as a condition of approval.
Okay.
And my only comment, oh, sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Hunsinger. My only comment was uh on that particular thing is that in terms of uh including conditions of approval, it's but for the conditions of approval, the application would not meet the criteria that you're doing this uh that you're judging the application or the quasi judicial uh type process. So but for the conditions, it does not meet the uh the criteria for approval. Does that make sense? No. So.
Go ahead.
Uh, so basically, uh, the conditions of approval are they're there in order to make the application conform with the code.
Right.
So if but for the condition, the current application as it is does not conform with one or more parts of the code.
So this one specifically, we would typically get to this when we're doing the engineer review and kind of a a preliminary engineering review is when some of this would come out more in the design standard review. It's maybe a little bit more detailed than what we would see, but it's not it wouldn't be inappropriate for this type of language to show up on the plot plan itself, right? For the plot plan to identify this one foot no access easement and for all that cleared out because it's not there, the engineer said, let's add that as a condition. So that's where Ms. Pratt's talking that you really do need to add that condition in order for it to confirm to this conform to the city standard, which is the city standard is to have this one foot no access easement along the frontage because we don't want a property owner of a townhome to come to the city and apply for a driveway off of the front of the house. We would be able to say, no, there's a one foot easement there, no access easement. So we we can deny that request for a driveway in the front of the house. Your access is on the back only, right? So that is a public work design standard. Adding it as conditional brings that into compliance.
That the the one foot access is the very last condition already.
Is it on there?
Yeah, but but it doesn't talk about the existing curb cuts. It seems to me that those existing curb cuts could just be the engineering standard review in the one foot easement is the condition.
Yeah, that that seems to make sense, which is maybe why the language had tweaked just a little bit. Uh, Commissioner Hunter, are you comfortable with number twenty five covering that?
Okay, yeah. Gotcha. Thank you, Gary, for catching that.
Yeah. Did you have some others?
Yeah, there was, well, the the other on page um it's six of sixteen. Um, and and these have to do with, you know, we changed the street trees and such. And I was thinking maybe on page six, six of sixteen. Uh, the first paragraph, then the street trees. Uh, and the vehicle parking standards. I guess on those first two, it again, that in my mind, it seems like, well, there should be conditions of approval of those things. I guess particularly the street trees. Yeah, it's in our design standards now, but if we have it in there, it won't be missed. Again, I'm I would, you know, if Chris said, no, we don't need these things or whatever, I I'm okay with that, but I just, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so the the landscape requirements get reviewed on individual site plans. So when they actually submit for building permit, that's when we would look at their landscape plan for that unit. Now, the townhomes would be tricky because it'll be all eight units at one time and we'll look at the landscape plan for that entire site um before we issue the building permit and then we'll review it again before we get a certificate of occupancy. So the landscape will get looked at individually. There are some landscape provisions that um affect the entire area, like the landscape strip along Chapel Drive, for example. And that is new. So this is more just kind of a heads up. I believe there is specific language about the landscape strip along Chapel Drive that is in the conditions already. Um, and then street trees, I think I earlier I said fifty feet, but it's thirty feet is the new provision. Um, that's probably not a bad one to add in. There's condition of approval if it's not there already. Because again, it wouldn't be uncommon to see that on a plot plan. Uh, it's just, it's a lot of detail to fit on the one plan. So yeah, that is condition uh that would seem appropriate. Unless Chair Connor finds it in the current conditions of approval.
No, but I just, I I questioned the um, you know, it's kind of a rabbit hole to start putting conditions of approval that are just saying that you have to meet the current city code for development because that you just apply the entire book eventually.
That's true. I'm okay if you don't, if we don't. I mean, that I, you make a good point.
Is it in any way ensure, I mean, is it? We just want to make sure the trees are there, right? Are we assured that they'll be there? If we're assured, then we don't need to do it.
I'm sure that I'm sure that at this point, no one's going to forget the trees.
The condition of approval number four is specific to the design of all public streets and private lanes shall conform to the requirements of the public works design standards. The public works design standards is where you find requirements for trees.
Okay.
Length of, you know, width of roads, all that stuff. So I think we're good under number four unless you want to be more specific, but.
Okay, no, we're good.
Were there any more, Van?
No, that's okay.
Okay. So, uh, Commissioner Rose, been waiting a long time.
Right, and um really, it's it's um, it's not really very important, but I was just, um, going back to what Gianna was saying. And uh, that I lived in Portland in um a condo that was, it was a townhome that was rare entry. Everybody's garages were on an alleyway behind the the complex. And then all of our front doors were out on the street and it was really pretty nice. It 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 worked worked really well. We liked it. So that's all.
I recommend you go to Google Earth on Eleventh Street in Carvallos and look at those townhouses and they've got the trees with some color. It's actually quite nice, so.
Uh, so no Google Earth right now, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, they're not. We have to go in public record, so, uh, yeah.
All right. Was that all? Uh, I, yeah, I guess so. Commissioner Green.
Um, I guess my, maybe just my confusion is when we were discussing the, so I guess if you go to the public use areas on page eight, uh, kind of goes over what they would do within the park. Mind you, the park hasn't necessarily been approved because it would be the park advisory board that would approve it, but if we punch the street through and I completely understand the need for that, you know, just for safety reasons alone, um how, we don't really know how much of the park we would lose. I mean, the kicker on there says eighty shade trees. I mean, I love that idea. Eighty shade trees sounds amazing. It kind of sounds like we're kind of making up for some trees that we don't have elsewhere since trees is our, you know, big kicker word besides unmute yourself this evening. Um, so I just, I I guess my my comment slash slash question would be, are we just saying we hope there's going to be a park, but we don't know what it's going to look like or what's going to happen? Is it just going to be kind of like that little corner area that we've said there's going to be a playground, there's going to be kind of a public use area and a couple spots, but the part in the back, how much of that would really be disturbed? I feel like I just don't have like a an idea of what how much of that would be affected when the street goes in and the and the homes or townhomes go in over there? And then, you know, I feel like the park is a big selling point for me. So if that gets hugely disrupted, it kind of feels like a concrete jungle if we can't have eighty shade trees and we're not doing a tree in the front of every home, it just kind of feels like there's a lot of concrete. So I mean, I don't really know if I have a question there. It's kind of a, I'm just a little lost.
I'll I'll turn that into the question into a question for you.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any city requirements for the acreage of that park?
Right.
Not any longer. Uh, the old park master plan had a general rule of I'd have to go back and look. I don't even want to cite it incorrectly, but it had a general rule of appropriate sized parks for a neighborhood. This park with the amenities that it has, even if you envision the park being like the pathway down, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at it, I can show again, but if you consider track death and the playground equipment, everything else, that's a, it's, that's a substantially sized neighborhood park. I think the current master plan says a neighborhood park is between two to six acres. I'd have to look again. Um, this would fall within those parameters of a neighborhood park. So I, yeah. And again, I don't remember if I addressed that specifically or not. I don't think I did on the acreage, but
It is, is there anything precluding us precluding the situation where we approve this? And then they end up submitting something with a with a half acre park and another, you know, really large lots on on Timothy Street.
No, and again, I apologize that this um, didn't get included, but all of the park facilities, everything they've submitted here will be what's required of them because this was part of their middle and they come in your meeting packet, but this is part of their submittal. They'll be held to this park standard. So playground equipment, again, if there's a little bit of tweaking where we swap the tot playground for the big kid playground for whatever reason, there may be some adjustments, but as far as what's submitted here, this is what it's going to be other than where we talked about continuing Timothy through. In your mind, I would envision that you're going to have houses. I guess I'll, let me pull this up real quick just because this is used to be a
Yeah, would it be on both sides of Timothy or just on the back end?
Yeah, so you're going to have Timothy come through here. It's pretty much straight was what the original plan was. So you're going to lose a couple of houses here, a couple lots here for Timothy to come through. And then this is a kind of a regular lot size. Well, I mean, this is a regular lot size. And what's come there, I think the forty footer, the forty five foot frontage. And then I think they're a hundred and twenty or a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty five feet deep. Sorry, I don't have that memorized. I could look at it on the other map, I guess, but if you envision, I mean, that's those lots are going to fill up the space, right? So this this kind of extra portion of the park up here is going to be developed and you're going to end up with this open green space and the playground and the park, uh, the the ballpark or the the ball court. And your open space in the park is going to be here during the winter and then it'll be, you know, all of this in the summer. Again, remember that you'll have the that this the loop will be here, right? It'll come down this way. That will be your walking loop and this loop won't exist up here.
So would the eighty trees still have to be something they do since it's?
Yeah. Yeah, there's no request to change that, so.
It doesn't, they would, they wouldn't plant trees in track death, right? The
I don't believe so.
And so it it doesn't look like there's space for eighty trees anymore.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and again, at at this level, the submittal, you know, if we want to add that to one of the development agreement conditions that you want to change, we can do that. But honestly, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head. And it may be a better discussion for the park board when they're refining this a little bit more. So again, if you want to have more, say you can, but I do think there's other interested parties that'll help shape that conversation to make sure that the park that gets approved is a park that's going to be approved by the community, not uh, the lowest cost. Uh, you know, park that the developer can put in here and and, uh, you know. I I I think we're, I think the city's protected. What's been submitted has been submitted. Any changes from this are going to be to the benefit of the city, not to the developer.
Commissioner Yoder, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, what has been submitted obviously can be changed. Um, which is why we're having a discussion right now. So it seems to me when it comes to the the size of the park, you know, like Haley said, you know, it's it's Vegas, got lots of trees. But if we, if the approval, if isn't it if we approve this and we don't have something in the city that says, well, the size of this has to be this uh such and such size, a year later, we can be approached again and it can, we can be told that it's going to change because we have approved it. And once we approve it, it really doesn't mean anything, just like the approval of no townhouses or no anything like that, because we didn't say absolutely there will not, you can't ask for um, any change to be made because the the chain, the approval has already been done. But unless we specifically say the size of the green space park is should be this size, can't it just be changed at a later time? Just like what we're going through now? Chris?
Um, they could apply. Again, there is, there are standards in place for neighborhood parks. This would be considered a neighborhood park. So you know, that that two to seven acre minimum, I think, would be held, but you've also got a development agreement that's going to specify you know, the things that are listed there, the sports court, the two play centers. Um, you know, that's all listed in there. Um, at some point, you can only get so small and you don't, you're not providing all of those amenities that you've agreed to, so. You can always come back and ask for changes, but that doesn't mean the changes are going to meet the city standards.
But development agreements can be changed. Isn't that, isn't that what we're undergoing right now?
Yep, yep, the process to go through. There's a public process.
Could potentially look completely different in another year than what we're seeing on paper. Unless we say it has to be such and such size, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Unless we say it has to be such and such size, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Well, but there's a, I guess what we're missing is there's a public process that we're going through right now that would have to be gone through again a year from now. If it was a. If it was a major modification to the approval, then they would have to go back in front of the public.
But it would still mean nothing, just like today, right now, doesn't really mean anything. We've approved it. Oh, there's Van doing his, oh Peggy, Peggy.
Timothy, right? Like it, it'll get punched through and it, I just feel like if it gets punched through, it is what it is. We've approved it, but we don't know what we're approving. Right? I mean.
Yes, there's some ambiguity there that you're, essentially you're going to leave it to city staff, the city engineer. To determine the layout of Timothy Street. And honestly, that's going to be a discussion between the city's engineer and the applicant's engineer. On the best way for Timothy Street to punch through. The city engineer works for the city and so he's got the city's best interests. And you know, it's difficult even for my level to say, well, I want Timothy to do this. Well, sometimes it doesn't matter what I think. If the engineer says it's got to go this way and this is why. And this isn't the best search for the city, then that's what I'm going to rely on. So. You know, there's, there's good people working for the city that have the city's best interest. There is some ambiguity on Timothy Street. Because it's not how it's submitted. The condition of approval states that they have to submit that as part of, they have to submit a revised preliminary plat. That's agreeable to me as the planning official before they can move forward with any other plans. And so. You're correct, there is some ambiguity there, but the intent I think is pretty clear on what we want. Timothy to look like and it's clear what the impact on the park will be. It'll be a smaller park than what's been proposed here.
So Dan and Gianna, both, do either one of you still have your hand up?
No, uh, Chris said what I was going to say.
All right. Commissioner Bernardino then.
Yeah, I just, do you? Do you have any sense at all, even vaguely, what the current plan for that park is acre wise? If we do this Timothy Street thing, it's literally like having that park. It's reducing it by like half. Which is significant when you're talking about a subdivision with what a hundred and ninety-four houses in it? That's half the park. Those are, that's a lot of people. And I mean, I, I like that it's got the. The ball courts and the playgrounds and all of that, but. That's a lot of people and they're going to need some green space to get away from each other because they're going to be packed in pretty tight. Um, I just, that just seems like a real shame to lose that much acreage. And I'm sorry, Chris, I know you said before why Timothy couldn't go up, why it can't. Swing up and over to preserve more. Why is it that it has to go completely straight?
I was trying to pretend I was a somewhat engineer type, but. You, you've got to have enough room between Timothy and the property line that you can have a lot there or you can have properties there. Um, so you can't go too far north or you don't have room to put a lot. Um, but it may be in the best, just to come up a little bit so that you have a little bit better ninety degree angle into Seventeenth Street, but. Again, that's a level of detail that the engineers are going to look at. It's not something that I'm going to dictate or. Or do it kind of the planning level.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have, what is it Willow? The street just north? Why isn't that the, the cut through?
Well, there was, as I think Mr. Miller said at the beginning of his testimony, there was testimony. When the original subdivision was approved from people that live on Willow Street that did not want their street to be the entrance into the subdivision. So the, the plan was changed as a condition of approval of the original subdivision.
Commissioner Hunsicker.
Okay. The park, well, the city park, I believe is seven acres. And if this thing's going to be between two and. Six acres, that'll, if you think about the sizes, the seven, uh, Fulmer City Park. You're not going to be much smaller than that.
If I did the math right, the way it's shown now before we push through Timothy's like five and a quarter acres. So. Probably something like a little between two and a half and three.
Okay, alright.
After.
Plenty. That road has got to go through there. That road has absolutely got to go through there. This, this city so many times. In the old days, wouldn't make roads go where they need to go. Don't do something stupid like that and take that out. So you can have a couple of more acres of park. There's plenty of park there.
Commissioner Yoder.
Could it be stipulated that it's a, this park is a minimum of three acres? Because that's a little bit more. The stipulation that it's not very ambiguous if you say an actual size of the park and make it a condition.
Well. If I understand things right, if we make that, we can't make it a condition unless there's some existing city code to back us up on that. So if, if the city code allowed to, we couldn't make it a requirement to be bigger than that.
Get taken out that stipulation of a park having to be a certain size for a certain neighborhood.
Yeah, Chris.
I, I guess when we're talking about a modification to the existing plan. The existing subdivision plan, the park was three point four acres. That's what's been approved right now. Is a three point four acre park. An acre of which was a pond area that. You could use in the summer, but not in the winter. I guess in this case you got a detention area, which you can use in the summer, not so much in the winter. But the three point four acre, you know, you said three acres, three point four. Again, if it's a condition or it's not a condition, I mean, I'm doing some rough math and. I, I don't know that we're losing. A significant amount of park space from what is already approved. We're really just talking about relocating the park. Roughly the same size, roughly the same features, except for the pond, but we're getting public restrooms and a. You know, two picnic area, covered area instead. You know, how much of a change are we really talking about? How much are we really modifying this other than changing the location? And, and getting rid of the pond, which had some pretty big, you know, negative connotations with it. So. Just for perspective, I, again, I understand that. What they originally submitted was. Seven plus acres and now we're dropping back down to the three or four, but it's not substantially different than what was in the currently approved subdivision. For this. Complex. So you are adding more homes. So you're going to have more park users. Um, so you could make the argument, you got more people using a small, you know, a similar sized park. Um, but the pond, the one acre pond significantly limited the number of people that could actually use that. Space, right? So if the pond goes away. You've added more houses, but the pond's gone. You've, you've really got kind of more space for more people and that seems to. Again, not be significantly different than what was already approved.
Uh, Dan, you still have your hand up on purpose?
Yeah, I, I just was going to say, I, I would defer to our parks, uh. Committee, I, I trust that they can come up with a good plan with the developer.
So are there any other comments, questions? Arguments, motions? Anyone would like to make?
There is, again, there's a recommended motion at the bottom of the staff report. I would just include that we add. To that language that the. Uh, additional amendments to the development agreement also be included in that approval.
And. And again, those, those. Additional amendments to the development agreement is there. Since they're not part of this packet. It, it feels a little incomplete. I mean, I saw him on the screen briefly.
Then it, yeah, it could be a more general statement that the development agreement shall be updated or amended to reflect the changes approved. Um, in the approval.
I like that better. Thank you.
It's like making a list, you know, if you make a real specific list, you're going to miss one thing out, but. More general statement will allow. Yeah, myself and public works director and the city engineer to go through a little more fine tooth and make sure we.
Commissioner Hunsicker, are you still have your hand up or hand up again?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion. Uh, I moved to adopt the findings of fact with a major. Modification application as presented in the staff report. Aided February eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And approve the mill pond crossing preliminary plat for phases two B through phase four. File number PC two dash twelve. Subsequent to the conditions of approval as contained in the staff report. And furthermore, uh, instruct that the development agreement be amended to. Reflect the changes in this approval.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Rose, seconds? Any discussion before we vote? Doesn't look like we have any. So all those in favor of approval as. Just now read, those in favor say aye. Raise your hand. And that is for, for and oh, five Gianna editor and. Uh, opposed. Green and Yoder opposed the motion passes. Five to two. Uh, the appeal process, um, what is the number of days that someone may? Appeal.
I believe it's. Catherine, I believe it's twenty-one days.
I believe it's twenty-one days as well. I don't have that, uh, pulled up right, actually. I'm not using my normal script. I apologize.
So what we'll be saying is that any participant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the city council. Within, um, a certain number of days of the date, the notice of decision is signed. And that number of days will be provided shortly.
So type three procedure. Sorry, I'm getting closer. Had to read through all this code to get to it.
Yeah. So this will not go to the city council unless there's an appeal.
Oh, sorry. Uh, decision is effective on the day after the appeal period expires. Where's my appeal period? Uh, Catherine, I want to see it. I know for the type two, it's, it's, uh.
Yeah. So looking at, I believe that it's also fourteen from what I was looking at as well.
Fourteen days after the notice of the decision is mailed. Yeah. So fourteen days. Sorry about that.
And when is that notice of decision?
That'll go out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to our agenda. I think the only thing remaining is staff report. Um, again, I won't read through it. Any questions on any of the specific items there? Other than the fact that I'm missing Mr. Deppa. And they, uh, busy several weeks, but, uh, lots of planning going on. Uh, I guess on special note, the, the additional subdivision approval that came in. Um, got a good start on the staff report for that one. So we'll be addressing that next month. So. Uh, you know, again, this major modification was essentially subdivision approval because there's so many aspects to it. So we'll be going through a very similar process next month with a smaller subdivision, much smaller in scale, but, um. That was one of those that, you know, every once in a while it just gets dropped on your desk. They hadn't talked to us ahead of time. No preliminary discussions, didn't let us know they're buying the property. They just showed up with the rolls and said. Yeah, we'd like to subdivide our property into whatever it is, ten lots or twelve lots or something like that. So. Did not have that one on the radar, um, which kind of monkeys with our. Schedule with the comprehensive plan review, but. We kind of knew that when we built that schedule, we'd have to be a little flexible depending on what, uh, planning files came in and those would be one of these situations we'll have to. Adjust a little bit. So, um, I, I do have calendared for that, the first meeting in. March, which I think is on the first. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I would like to regroup around the housing. Policies on that meeting and then we've got the twenty-first, which is the third Monday. Uh, is when we plan to have the hearing for that, uh, second subdivision application.
Chris, where is that at? Um, it says twenty-one forty-eight main.
Yeah, it's on Main Street. It's on the south side of Maine, just as you're. Just before you get to like timber supply and all that. It's a, it's a real big house that sits back there and they've got like a detached garage. Um, if you drive, get past, yeah. Uh, what's it right next to? It's right when you get past human being and all that, then it sneaks up on you on the right hand side there as you're going.
Oh, it's before, it's before Newton Creek, that house.
Yeah, right by Newt, right before Newton.
There's a couple of big houses there and they're going to put eleven of them in there.
Yep.
Wow.
And they just took down a bunch of trees during the last few days.
Oh.
Funny how that happens right before they submit a land use decision. Yeah. Our land use application.
Alright.
Any other specific questions on the staff report? Get some lot line adjustments and some kind of minor things, but. Didn't want to let you know about that second subdivision approval.
Uh, no, thank you for the staff report. I, I really appreciate seeing, seeing what's going on. Okay.
Nothing else for me.
And you mean, we're not, we're not going to do, review the housing?
Yeah, I, I missed that.
So Chair Connor, it, Chair Connor, it is late. Uh, you can, uh, entertain a motion to table that for a later hearing.
I, I can entertain that motion and I would suggest that we talk about it at least for. Five or 10 minutes to give, uh, city staff some direction about how to proceed. Um. The, the information that came in, um. If, if you read through that, went a lot of different directions all at once. I, I don't think we have a lot of disagreement about what we'd like this. Housing chapter to say, based on all of our conversation at our previous meeting. But the direction that we gave about how to put it into a chapter and what to. Um, accentuate and, and which words to place in the header and, and other things was, was rather diverse and which. Which, um, plan we each suggested to start with as a model was also very diverse and that kind of left, uh. City staff in a tough place about how to even proceed. Um, I'm at a bit of a loss myself. Curious to know if anybody has any good ideas, what our next step ought to be. And I'd entertain thoughts and suggestions from anybody at this point. Um, and and a a bit of further information is Van and I gave some very specific directions about. What we'd start with and how we'd lay it out and what we'd include and not include. And, um, the others kind of gave more general direction, maybe said this is our best template, and these are the things I'd like to highlight. So we could, we could deliberate whose approach we should start with, or we could, um. Suggest some other discussions. Commissioner Sullivan. Muted. Muted Joseph.
Alright, so case in point. I was saying that I know that I'm really presenting as like a competent, confident person here who's saying wise things, but my mind is basically gone at this point. And I just want to acknowledge that fact.
Fair enough, fair enough. Commissioner Hunsicker.
I I personally, I. If we don't start with something specific, and in my mind, it seems like. The, the. Draft that was prepared for us, if we don't start for that, I don't know how from. The next place. You go, I mean, if. I I just don't, I I, I know you talked about. Using one of the other cities and starting with that. And what I, it, what I feel like I have, would have to do is. Look at that, then go clear back to the, um. Housing analysis and say, well, would this work here? With what we got that was already put to us in a draft, we know at least it it works for the, the study that was done for us.
So.
That's all I got.
I I I have a strong opinion. And I guess I'll, I'll let other people share their strong opinions if anyone has any. Um, I I feel like the strong, the the draft. What you're calling the draft that was provided by the consultant that did the housing needs analysis is not really what I think ought to be in a. Housing chapter for our comprehensive plan. It's a bunch of specific actions, and it doesn't really address the state goals of what's supposed to be in a comprehensive plan housing chapter. And and the examples that we provided, I think are all better, even, even Floma's previous version. And. And the problem is. Then I think that, you know, you suggested that, I suggested start with Redmond, somebody said start with Monroe and somebody else said. Start with the city of Flometh previous version. And so we've got. Everybody disagreeing on what to start with, I think we need to start with something. And and we've got at least four different opinions about where to start, so I think we need to either. Um. By some means, we need to come to a consensus, or at least not a consensus, but a majority vote of where to start. So that, so that we can make progress. Um, or we could, you know, write everything from scratch as a committee, which sounds horrible to me. Will take all the rest of the next six months. Commissioner Yoder.
I vote that we table this, it's been over four hours. I don't think we're gonna get a lot of really good ideas right now.
Second that motion.
Okay, deliberations, I'll I'll vote yes, but, um, I think the first thing I'll say that means our next meeting. Um, we're gonna start at exactly this point where we don't have any ideas and don't know how to start, we might talk for a while. And not really make significant progress, so I think everybody should be aware of that, and we should consider that, um. Maybe we need more on our agenda for the next meeting, just because of that, or or maybe not, maybe we'll spend a lot of time talking about where to start. Any other thought or ideas before we take a vote on that motion?
I'll just add, I I could probably a little, I can try to provide a little bit more guidance as well, um, maybe a. Couple options on pass forward, and I can get that out before the meeting, so we're not. Um, stalling out too much at the beginning of the meeting, give a little bit more direction, so let me. Put some stuff together, I realize everybody's tired, so let me give some direction and. Um, hopefully hit the ground running at the next meeting on on housing.
Okay, it'll be helpful. And even if we throw away all your suggestions, at least we'll have something to start discussing.
Have something to shoot at.
Yep. That's helpful. That always helps get the ball rolling.
Gary, in in absence, anything else, we could always have the next meeting, you know, in my living room. I'll make popcorn, we'll set the cameras so that everybody can see what's going on and maybe we'll come up with some good ideas.
That sounds like more fun than doing this. Um, so all in favor of the motion to table everything, say aye.
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 Uh, unanimous, and, um, thanks, everybody for hanging in there. As long as we did hang in there, and thanks, Chris, for volunteering to do a bit more. Meeting adjourned.
Alright.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, guys.